All righty, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and kick things off. Before we get started, I just wanted to kind of quell the public a little bit with an incident that occurred not last Friday, but the Friday before. This is regarding a cyber attack that was committed on the town of Waxaw. So before we get into tonight's agenda, I wanted to address something that you may have seen some news stories about. The town of Waxaw has unfortunately suffered a cyber attack. On Friday, September 12th, our IT team discovered irregularities in our network and took immediate action to protect our organization. The town then enlisted the North Carolina Joint Cybersecurity Task Force to launch a forensic investigation to source and to, oh, sorry, and to secure our servers. That investigation is still ongoing, and it will take some time to complete before we know exactly what happened and by whom. Here's what we can tell you right now. We do not have any confirmation that any data containing any personal information has been taken. All emergency services were fully operational throughout this incident 24/7, and they're still operational today. The town of Waxaw is and has been open for business and will continue to be so as we work to get back to normal. The good news is that most of our services were not significantly impacted. We have a very professional IT staff who were more than capable of rebuilding our network from scratch, which had to be done. When these types of things happen, basically all the computers got to come in and get wiped and get reprogrammed. So it's a starting-from-scratch type of exercise. They've been working very hard and very diligently to get this done in a very quick amount of time. We are so very thankful to have the caliber of staff capable of doing this work. We're grateful for the resources and the partnerships provided by the Union County IT and Emergency Management, along with the North Carolina National Guard and the North Carolina Local Government Information Systems Association Strike Team. Say that five times fast. And the North Carolina Department of IT, among others. We will keep you posted about this situation as we learn more, and we will thank you all for your patience and your support through this challenge. So, moral of the story, everything's okay, we're doing fine, we're getting things back up and running. So thank you very much for your patience on that. So, without further ado, we will go ahead and kick off this normal Board of Commissioners meeting on September 23rd, 2025. I would invite you all to rise for pledge allegiance and a moment of thanks and praise.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, pure, politic, and justice for
Let's see here. Can I get a motion, or are there any adjustments or edits to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, then, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda is officially adopted. Next up is general public comments. We have a long list of folks making general public comments, so I would ask you to keep your cheer and applause to an absolute minimum, if not a zero, so we can get through folks in a timely manner. You do have three minutes. We ask you to be civil, directed to the board as a whole, and no individual either in the crowd or on the board. First up tonight, we ask Debbie Oliver.
Not in bad pity, keep telling that.
That happens.
Okay, well, the last time I was here, we talked about the community and the growth and everything else. I just want to make just two very pointed comments. You guys were elected by the people of this town and this area who trusted you that you would protect them and do what is best for the community. Unfortunately, in my opinion, you have failed at that because you have let the growth in this area just get completely out of hand, and it's becoming unbearable to even live here and even do normal things every day. I would also like to say one thing, there's been comments on the internet of which I live in Heathwood, we're not in Waxaw proper, but everything that goes on in Waxaw gravely affects us, traffic and everything else that goes on. So, I would be very, I would ask very kindly for those people who keep calling us freeloaders because they think that we're using town benefits, and to be quite honest, we've got better situation than most people that live in the town. So you don't have any benefits that we really are just clamoring to get, so calling us freeloaders is inappropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Lou Romano.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I am here again to voice my opinion against the Olivia. The vote tonight should reflect what is in the best interest for Waxaw's residents, students, and surrounding communities, not developers. First, this is an EC zone parcel, and by Waxaw's own explanation of what economic center zoning is, in part, is as follows. Business-first construction. The zoning often requires commercial or non-residential uses be well-established before or alongside residential construction. This helps ensure the area functions as an economic hub. Why are we not demanding the developing of the commercial portion of this project before the residential, or at least at the same time? Isn't that what is needed to offset the exceptional tax ratio imbalance between residential and commercial? Always the topic point of conversation. As elected leaders, your responsibility is to balance growth with infrastructure to support it. Right now, our schools cannot handle this additional burden. Approving this development without addressing school capacity would be irresponsible governance. We already have an overly stressed school system with above-capacity schools, overcrowded and unsafe buses that are now making multiple trips to the same pickup and drop-off sites daily. Children are currently getting home after 5:00 PM, no time for homework, socialization, or family time. Students sitting on the floor of both lunchrooms and at times classrooms and the bus is unacceptable. This is unfair to our children who deserve a safe and comfortable learning environment. The people of Waxaw have been speaking out for the last few years to no avail and just constantly being disregarded. This vote is being done by a board with soon-to-be-outgoing board members, and the majority of the people feel they should pass the discussion or future vote of the Olivia on to whatever new board is elected. Let them take the time to evaluate it and all that comes with this project. Your constituents and the people being affected are only asking for you to slow down and take a breath. I urge you in the strongest terms to reject this proposal until our schools can support it, our roads can support it, our sewers, our water systems can support it. I hear Millbridge is having problems with pressure. Our children, our families, and the future of our town depend on it and you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Martin Turner.
I didn't really prepare anything tonight, I just jotted some notes down. As I said last time, I'm not an eloquent speaker, in fact, I'm very uncomfortable. In 1994, I lived in Charlotte. And, as I said in the email last week, which by the way, I need to apologize for, I said some things in the email that were uncalled for, and I apologize. I don't change my stance on the growth in Waxaw. So in 94, I was living in Charlotte, and my wife and I were looking for a place to live to get out of the little one-bedroom apartment, and we began driving all around And the further we got away from Charlotte, the more people began to just wave. We decided that was our criteria. We wouldn't buy a house unless people waved at us. Nobody waves here anymore. I'm sorry, my heart's going a mile a minute. I am not an eloquent speaker, and I'm, I don't like crowds. It's part of the reason that we moved to Waxaw. There were 1,900 people here when we moved here. There are over 23,000 people here now, and the roads haven't changed. It's crowded. I don't like it. I don't want our town to become a city. I don't, how do I put this? The more people there are, if there's one nut that wants to stab a girl on a train car for every thousand people, we had two when I moved here, and now we've got 23. I don't like crowds. I don't want to live in a city, I want to live in a little town. So, when I wrote my email last week, I questioned the honesty of some of the members of this board, and that was not appropriate. But I began to look for what other motivations there might be, and I came across some additional information that makes me wonder if the board is afraid, because fear is a great motivator.
Thank you. We have a lot of people to get through, yeah, I'm sorry. Final comment?
So if there's something to be afraid of, what is it? Please, tell us.
Thank you. All righty, next up, Jeff Carroll.
I want to thank you for your speech. I know you're nervous. I get nervous too, but before I start, I guess I'm starting. This lady that spoke first, we're all neighbors here, we care about each other, and that's why I'm here, because I'm here for everybody behind me, so I got to give her a hug. I'm going to share a short story right quickly, but as I was a little boy, I still remember my dad, and I think we all had the same story, going to a car wash for the first time, automatic. And as I was pulled in there, it was dark, and I was staring through there, and I was just looking. We just moved on, and the water started hitting the windows, and all of a sudden, the brushes hit the top and slamming the sides, and I kept looking at my dad, and we kept driving through, and I kept staring at him, and we finally got to the end, and we drove out, and he just looked over and smiled at me. But I didn't scream, cry, or holler because I trusted him. I knew he had me. And that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. I've lost a lot of trust in people that I respected years ago. And the developers here, I want to start back with Robert, I want to thank you for what you do. When you said you do not support this, we had a master plan, and you said you do not support this, Olivia, it does not fit that property. And we sat here, and we challenged the developers here, let them have more time to speak, to fight for it. I'm mad at the developers, but my boss says I don't support it. We should have stopped right then, every one of us, and supported our mayor and to say, this does not fit this property. But developers kept pushing on and pushing on, and that aggravates me here tonight. We talked enough about God this week, but I'm still, tell you this, we still answer to Him every day. And that's what I'm challenging. I know these three here, they don't support identity, I know that, but I do not know y'all's three, how you stand on this. I know what's been approved in the past. But what I would love you to do is go out tonight and vote against this, support these people that's behind me. And I met a little girl, her name, well, she's probably not known, she's 15, 16 years old, at Farmer's Market Saturday, she was supposed to be here, her name was Lydia. And she had, I handed her my piece of papers out, I was fighting Olivia, I heard her sitting out over here, but anyway, I was fighting them, we're fighting them, so she said, I'll be here, I've been looking for Olivia the whole night, but there's still some people from Farmer's Market back here, anyway, they're still here. But that's what we're here for, is this next generation. You've got two months, and then your terms are up. I would love you to go with me and sit down in a restaurant after this meeting tonight and be thanked and clapped for instead of booed, because if it goes the wrong way, I do care about you. I don't want to see you booed tonight and not feel safe in this town, or not want to go walk the streets in this town.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thanks to the board for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been a resident of unincorporated Union County for about 20 years now. I'm not going to go into the impact of, on, you know, what the unbridled growth is doing to Waxaw, because I'm sure you guys have heard it and you'll continue to hear it. We all know what it's done to our services, water, school. My daughter is one that has actually had no seat at lunch and actually had to stand in the bathroom because she was so embarrassed, because she did not have a seat at high school to sit at lunchtime. And not just once, many times. She's also one of the students that was affected on the bus where the kids had to actually sit on the ground in the aisle. And unless you're one of those kids, you don't know what that feels like. And Lord knows, I don't want to be one of those kids. And it's so sad to think that all of the new growth, and I welcome people to come, I have no problem with them coming. Let's just do it smart. Let's build the roads before they come. Let's make the reasons why they want to come here the same reasons they want to stay and not be surprised when they get here that it's not what they thought it was. For these 3,000 to 4,000 homes that are already in the pipeline, and for this vote tonight, and this traffic impact study that's required of a developer to do, my questions for you are this. Did they do the analysis considering these 3,000 to 4,000 homes that are in the pipeline? Did they also consider the train and the schedule when we back up? Or maybe even the emergencies that we may have that can transpire during when the train comes? All these factors that are not the norm that Waxaw has that makes Waxaw special, that's why people have moved here. And if in fact, this traffic study is done the right way, where they've considered all these things, and we do allow this development to go ahead tonight, I want you to think about the next five years, because the DOT does not have the widening of 16 on the books for five years. So what is that going to look like for these 3,000 or 4,000 homes that are already on the books, in addition to the more that are coming that we can't stop? What is the construction going to look like on 16 then? Close your eyes and imagine it. Are we going to shut down? Because that's what it's going to look like. Because guess what? The arteries, which are Waxaw, Marvin, 521, and 16, we're all in the same boat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Diane Cook, or Ms. Diane Hook, sorry. I always get that mixed up, guys, sorry.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you, I want to say thank you for being our Commissioners for a long time. I voted for you guys, and I like everybody up here. I just wanted to say very quickly that I looked at the land use that was developed in 2016 when we chose pockets for neighborhoods that are necessary, and you chose a commercial development center, employment commercial center. That is a big, but I just looked at it, it was voted in at 2016, you again voted it in, only you expanded it in 2021. And it's a nice, beautiful, purple, round circle, and it says on that EU, and it's right there by Blythe Road where my development is, Providence Farms, and I just ask you to honor that and still vote that way, and to please vote down this motion and deny the adoption of the conditional rezoning petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Marion, Town Commissioners. My name is Mike Deulio, I'm a candidate for one of the three open Town Commissioner seats in the November election. The Olivia Project has been front and center over the previous weeks, and Waxaw residents have made their positions very clear, and they understand that Waxaw's current 93% to 7% residential to commercial imbalance is a red flag. Simply stated, our town is heading in the wrong direction. This imbalance was inherited from the previous administration, and it worsened under the current majority. So why is this rezone request still a conversation? Commissioners Wedger and Don and Mayor Murray have publicly stated their opposition to this conditional rezone request. The additional 800 to 1,000 new residents just from Olivia will negatively affect Waxaw citizens in terms of direct cost to serve, added strain on roads, parks, and our schools which are already near or over capacity. For the Olivia Project, the minimum consideration of 20% commercial to residential could not be realized due to the constraints of the parcel of land, so it's simply the wrong project for this parcel of land. And make no mistake, based on the current lopsided imbalance, 20% should no longer be considered a minimal starting point moving forward. The Olivia Project fails to meet the minimum standards. Commissioner Wedger said it best when talking about working with developers. Why are we taking crumbs? Waxaw is a town that others aspire to be. There will be developers who will be eager to partner with Waxaw on win-win projects. We have the right to respectfully say no when a project doesn't make sense for the town of Waxaw and its residents. For the three Commissioners who have chosen not to seek reelection in November, I want to thank you for your service. But truth be told, you no longer have a dog in this fight. It's quite easy to be right tonight. Read the room for the previous two months. I'm hopeful that after additional time and careful reflection, the Majority Board will vote their conscience for common sense. The Olivia Project simply fails to meet the minimum requirements for rezone consideration. The citizens of Waxaw are making this decision very easy for you. So tonight, let your vote reflect, the local government is not tone deaf, and the entire board truly stands for residents first. Please vote to deny the Olivia Project rezone request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, John Kachi.
Good evening. I lived in Waxaw for eight years. Commissioners, your duty is to protect the long-term well-being of this community. When a development like this is approved, the burden falls on taxpayers to fix the infrastructure gap. This project is not sustainable. Our schools are already overcrowded, our water treatment facilities are at capacity, and traffic is terrible, especially around 16. Approving more homes without addressing these problems will make daily life harder for families who already live here. These people here, your constituents, they voted you in to represent us. Some of you don't even live in Waxaw. Don't sit up there and vote yes and say you care about the community. If you vote yes, then you obviously don't. When the facts don't support a project, yet you still vote for this project, it doesn't look like responsible leadership. It looks more like, in my opinion, the appearance of a backroom deal or some kind of personal gain by approving this. This decision will be remembered. The residents who elected you will live with the consequences in traffic, classrooms, and in water quality for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, we have Michael Dobie.
Good evening, I'm Michael Dobie, and I'm running for Waxaw Commissioner for this reason. Because Marvin and Weddington, they don't have these issues. They don't have the kinds of commercial multifamily developments flooding their towns. So why do we keep allowing it here without the infrastructure to support it? Highway 16 expansion, the DOT says it's going Highway 16 expansion, the DOT says it's going to take at least 10 years to complete to widen to four lanes. And as for the Waxaw Expressway, even if it's privately funded, by the time it's done, it's already outdated. It's not a solution. It's a shortcut to more gridlock. That's not planning. That's the definition of insanity. This is what responsible growth looks like. If expansion is your goal, then do it right, not backwards. Stop putting the cart before the horse. But what I keep hearing from too many elected officials is we need more businesses so we don't have to raise your property taxes for roads and schools. Let's call that what it is. It's a threat and a dishonest one at that. Telling voters it's either overdevelopment or higher taxes is political blackmail. And guess what? That's a violation of oath. Under Article 5, Section 2 of the North Carolina Constitution, it clearly says, "Power of taxation shall be exercised in just and equitable manner for public purposes only." But instead, we see that power being used for corporate incentives, public-private partnerships, and luxury developments that do little or nothing for the average taxpayer. These aren't public purposes. They're special interests. And for being honest, they're probably unconstitutional. But nobody challenges them because they're hidden under layers of planning and closed backdoor deals. If you want to live in a big city, move to Charlotte or Monroe. But if you want to protect what's special about Waxaw, if you want a town that's still family-first, small business-friendly, and historically rooted, then you need to vote for leadership that puts residents before developers. God bless.
Lisa Leacy?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I reside here within Waxaw city limits with my family. Here we are again. The frustration thickens. The financial increases to the residents have become more and more of a burden. All these ongoing plans for Waxaw's growth strategies, these strategies are pockets of destruction, destroying the beautiful landscape of Waxaw historically. Most citizens do not want all this high density. The Waxaw people keep showing up. Our voices are echoing repeatedly. No refuge in sight seems to be falling on deaf ears. We haven't had the majority on all the past projects that have been stamped approved without having any consideration for the taxpayers of Waxaw. We aren't here to support these rising changes that come at the speed of light. We have endured, God knows, it's been a very challenging two years having a split Board. Thank you Commissioners Daunt and Wedger for enduring with the residents of Waxaw. Tonight, we ask this Board to come together. Come together and make an impact for the future of Waxaw. Please, vote no to the rezoning of Olivia. Vote no. Let's look ahead with the residents in mind, please. Thank you.
Glenn? Glenn Deulio?
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I struggled to come up tonight, but one thing has still bothered me, so I'm here. I want to recall the August 12 meeting. That was the original date of the Olivia vote. I struggled. I worked very hard that day. Actually, the night before, I prepared a speech for three hours. It took me to condense it into three minutes. I struggled, worked all day, and ran here only to find out there was no quorum, no meeting. It was an information session only. It still bothers me on what happened that night. We have, all you officials have talked about integrity, decorum, honor, things of that nature. I want to know where the decorum was that night, where the ethics were that night. We, it's not like I could call a paid staff member of Waxaw to find out what really happened. I try to pride myself on facts. I don't have a very big social media presence. Anything I would say, I would say it to your face, and I mean that. The little I know is Commissioner A, we'll call that Commissioner A, notified the town that they would not be making the meeting that night, maybe a week in advance. And that in and of itself is fine. Things happen. That Commissioner may have had to take their student to college for the beginning of a fall semester. That Commissioner may have had a medical procedure, may have had a planned vacation for months they were going to attend. That in and of itself is fine. Around the same time, the developer applicant, marketing team asked for an extension. That's like a hmm-hmm moment. And I don't mean this to be like a gotcha moment or a aha moment. I'm just looking for a reasonable explanation on what happened. Soon before the meeting took place, two other Commissioners dropped out. On the appearance, it looks like there would have been a no vote with Commissioner A being absent. The mayor would have been a tiebreaker, probably would have been a no vote. But then we have Commissioner B and Commissioner C drop out unexpectedly 12 to 24 hours before the meeting, leaving people who killed themselves to attend high and dry. But the marketing team wasn't here conveniently. It just looks like the vote was manipulated. I just want to know where the integrity and where the decorum is on that. That's stuck in my craw for a while. And I just hope that better heads prevail tonight and vote no to the Olivia Project. Thank you for your time.
Next up, John Jimnani.
I'm John Jimnani. I live in Millbridge. I'm a candidate for the town of Waxaw Commissioner this November. And I want to say thank you to all the folks that spoke up tonight. You guys are doing what government in Waxaw should look like. I commend you, and it's really cool to be a part of this community. Mayor and the Board, good evening. And I want to just say, I've been paying attention to the Waxaw Board of Commissioners meetings for a long while now. And this is by far the most people I've ever seen show up, at least this meeting and the last meeting before the, or at the continuance last month. So why are all of us here today? Because we're all, we deeply care about this town and what the rapid growth has done to the quality of life here in Waxaw. This Olivia Project that you'll be voting on tonight is a perfect example of what Waxaw residents have been opposed to and voicing their concerns to this Board for a long while now. Olivia will add to the large volume of pending housing units already approved. That volume is around 3,800 units as of tonight. I strongly urge you to decline approval of the Olivia Project based on three reasons. It barely meets the recommended minimum criteria for commercial space in a conditional rezoning request, and prior to this week, it was below the town's minimum recommendation. Number two, it does not meet the recommended minimum criteria for parking spaces for the number of apartment units. And number three, it is one less property along the Waxaw Parkway East where we can place an economic center or commercial space, which can help balance the residential versus commercial tax revenue ratio. This project will not improve that ratio, which my friend Mike already stated, as a 93% residential to 7% commercial. With 3,800 more residential units approved, we will need economic centers and commercial quarters to be of service to the growing population of Waxaw. And adding 315 more apartments takes us further away from that goal. And just as a side note, the Planning Board voted overwhelmingly for a negative recommendation as well. So please, vote no on the Olivia Project and give Waxaw a chance to stay awesome. Thank you.
Not to be outdone, we have Rob Leacy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. My name's Rob Leacy. I'm a resident of Waxaw. Let me get my glasses on here. For years, some members of this Board have been ignoring the cries of the majority of Waxaw residents to stop uncontrollable growth that has been imposed on our town. Their approvals have created overcrowded schools, unbearable traffic, and overburdened services. These issues are obvious, and we have heard them all addressed over and over for years. Thankfully, today, we had some reports of how the Waxaw residents actually feel. We saw them on television. But I want to thank Commissioner Daunt and Commissioner Wedger for putting the residents of Waxaw first and understanding the negative effects of uncontrollable growth on our town. And tonight, this Board has the opportunity to do the right thing, and that is to deny the rezoning of Olivia. Thank you.
Next up, we have Tom Simmons. Tom Simmons?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is my first time attending a town hall meeting. I've been a resident here in Millbridge since 2020 and decided to attend tonight out of concern of all the reasons you've heard today. And I have two kids, and one has moved to middle school, one is currently still attending Kensington Elementary. Parents struggle to get their kids into school by 7:30 in the morning, and as with a bad traffic, just trying to get the buses there on time, the kids with their car rider line there in time. I see this almost every Friday as I volunteer at the elementary school. Both my kids have had to go into a portable classroom setting where it gets really hot in the summer and really cold in the winter. It comes, I have to hear about the, how hot it was that day. Pack extra waters, pack extra clothing so they can keep warm in the winter. And this is our schools. You've heard not having room to sit on buses, not having room to sit down at lunch. These are, should be pretty basic understanding that we don't need any more residents right now until the infrastructure is ready for it. Last night, I had a trip planned to go from Waxaw to Monroe. Planned out 20 minutes. Woke up this morning, put it in my GPS, it was almost 50 minutes. That by itself is horrendous. It's horrible. This is not the right direction for Waxaw. I've heard that people don't wave anymore. When I moved here in 2020, people waved. I waved back. It was nice. It was great, a great place to live. I haven't waved, seen, haven't any, I have not had anyone wave back at me in probably months. I wave still. No one waves back. Why is that? We have an overburdening, burden of the water, the sewage, the schools. We now have horrendous traffic, and we're seeing the destruction of a culture of small town in USA otherwise known as Waxaw. All the things that we've come to love and know and why people really desire to live here. The project doesn't meet the requirement for parking, does not meet the ratio of commercial and residential mix. So I would encourage and urge the Commissioners to vote no. And voting no does not mean a no for future projects. It just gives us time to breathe. Thank you.
And Mr. Daniel Ferris?
Good evening, Mayor Murray, Board of Commissioners. Before I begin, I'd like to thank every single resident here at the site. Thank you for everybody that's shown up now to three meetings to voice their opinions and have your voices heard. It means so much to see so many people engaged. Tonight, before the Board of Commissioners is the views of Olivia. It's been a hot topic now for several Board of Commissioners meetings, coming up and out on four months technically, if you include the June meeting with the Planning Board, also giving its recommendation not to see the project move forward. So many great points have been echoed repeatedly now. I'd hate to wait the Board of Commissioners' time because I'm so sure so many people want to see the vote and what that outcome may be because it will set a keystone for our future. Unfortunately, I believe this keystone will be in the wrong direction, and that's why I proclaim that this is the wrong project for the town of Waxaw and the Waxaw Parkway, and I believe so today, that this still is the wrong project. Just recently, the applicant amended their petition to meet the minimum standards, the minimum standards of commercial mix use. But so many residents tonight have stood before you with a passion and a love for Waxaw. The minimum standards, the love and passion of Waxaw is overflowing here tonight. And I've got to say, I look forward to something more than the minimum standards. One of the things that I fear about this project that I've repeatedly said is, while the applicant essentially is increasing its density, it cannot support it without amending its parking ratios. But part of those parking ratios, 4% of those parking ratios are actually reliant upon more parking on-street. On-street parking leading towards the roundabout, I believe, would be a devastating effect. It would be counter to actually even being an artery, counter to is actually what we did in Amavi. And one of the recommendations of the Planning Board was to not to allow on-street parking to facilitate traffic movement. Parkway is intended to facilitate traffic movement. Yes, this is a parcel that is now offset with that internal movement, but it still would be an adopted road, and we should still support above minimum standards. I think that this project is in the wrong direction, and I don't know how else to put it besides that there are so many miscues in this project. And I'm asking you kindly not to vote in favor of it. I'm kindly asking you to vote no. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. I'll just remind everyone that we now have the rest of the agenda to go through. This is an official meeting, so do please contain your exuberance for or against comments being made, either by Commissioners or presenters. We are actually here discussing things for the future of Waxaw, so we appreciate your calmness as we do that. We're all trying to be as thoughtful as we can up here, and I think that works best if we're able to concentrate on what we're doing up here and not worrying too much about what's going on in the audience. So please contain your exuberance at the end of the day. Thank you. Alrighty. Next up is the Consent Agenda. We have one item on the Consent Agenda. It is a proclamation in support of Constitution Week. So ahead of our vote, I will go ahead and read this proclamation as I feel this is one of those things that, you know, we all need to recognize and realize just how important the Constitution is, as recent events shows that it's often under threat. So proclamation in support of Constitution Week. I apologize, we haven't moved yet off of general comments since we haven't voted on the Consent Agenda, so we'll take a step back. I apologize to one, Ms. Valerie Summers. You were missed on the list, so do please come on down and share your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Barbie.
My name is Valerie Summers. I've lived in Waxaw for over 20 years. Let me start by stating a few things I think some of you have forgotten. You serve the residents of Waxaw. You were elected by the residents of Waxaw to be the voice of the residents of Waxaw. You were elected by the residents of Waxaw to be the voice of the residents of Waxaw. I think Joe Pesci said it well in the movie With Honors. Our founding fathers didn't think of themselves as leaders. They wanted a government of citizens, not royalty, a government of listeners, not lecturers. You're all servants of the people. The day that you decide to, quote, "silence the noise," end quote, of the people, and that's a direct quote from a sitting Commissioner, that's the day that you're guilty of dereliction of duty and the day that you should have resigned from your position. Now, as far as the views at Olivia rezoning request, I'd like to reiterate several points that perhaps some of you didn't hear if you were busy silencing the noise. They've refused to meet the minimum standards that you're in office to pass and maintain. This alone should be enough to make every one of you vote no. The schools the residents of this development would be assigned to are already above capacity, and this doesn't even consider the students that will be added with the nearly 4,000 already-approved residences. 300 to 600 or more residents would put an additional strain on town resources such as law enforcement and emergency services on top of the already-approved developments. And this, I'm sure, would lead to an increase in residence taxes since previous boards created a town with a grossly unbalanced tax base of more than 90% residential to less than 10% commercial. If you approve this rezoning, you're also adding anywhere from 300 to 900 more vehicles to the almost 8,000 vehicles being added from already-approved developments. The small section of the parkway that this development would build is not a complete road. It's a two-lane road that goes nowhere. It cannot and will not relieve traffic congestion in any way. The owners of the additional parcels to create a full leg of the parkway are, at this time, to my knowledge, in no way bound to build their portions of said road, and that could take decades before it happens. Which further supports the point that the Olivia project will in no way relieve but will exacerbate the current traffic problems. The infrastructure for this out-of-control growth is just nowhere in sight. It's irresponsible, unjust, and arrogant for you to approve this rezoning. It's a slap in the face of every resident that has made their voice heard. If you think there are a majority of residents who want this, then find a way to let the residents decide. Voting yes for this shows everyone the disrespect and disregard that you have for the office you hold and the people you're supposed to serve. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you. So we'll go to the consent agenda. We have a proclamation. This is a proclamation in support of Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Congress. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Robert J. Murray III, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Waxaw in the state of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th to September 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, duly adopted and affected the 23rd day of September 2025. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Consent agenda is so adopted. We have nothing for recognition, presentations, or public hearings, so we will move forward to our presentation by Kevin Robinson and the rezoning petition of Olivia. Again, I remind folks, this is an official meeting. We will be discussing topics related to this project, so please contain your exuberance. I know this is a very emotional topic, but we're trying to get this done and get it done as fairly as we possibly can. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I think everybody's somewhat familiar with this at this point. I am going to go through this a little bit quickly, try to get to some of the items at the end where there are some changes that have been made, and focus on that with you. Again, this is a request by Tyson Carlton Mark Trustee. Total of four parcels. One of those is a portion of a parcel. The other one was annexed at the August 26th meeting, or maybe that was August 12th. It was in August. From employment center to conditional zoning mixed use, CZMU. The total parcel size is 33.34 acres. As has been mentioned, it is currently zoned EC, and then it's also in the future Waxaw future land use as EC Employment Center, so those do line up. What is being requested is rezoning it to conditional zoning mixed use. So there can be apartments there as well as commercial up front along the parkway. This is the original proposed site design. As you can see right there, originally, there was about 900 feet of parkway, some trail connections, a stream buffer, Path 24 to be connected in the rear, and gated access. Commercial was up front, right here, along the parkway east. Most of that remains the same. Originally, this was proposed for up to 307 multifamily dwelling units and no more than 20,000 square feet of commercial, which was around 10%. Actually, when we went through and looked at the calculation, it was about 13%, still under the 20% to 60% mix that CZMU zoning district calls for. There were TIA improvements there, which included the parkway east segment and Public Road A, and a street stub from Public Road cul-de-sac to adjacent property, gated secondary access to residential. Staff's recommendations on that were that the existing property line, the extension would, the parkway would extend to the existing property line, which was originally in the TIA. That would be an additional 300 linear feet, included stream crossing, removal of the gate at the second road connection to residential units to improve resident connectivity, and then also additional commercial space to at least meet the minimum of the CZMU zoning district land use ratio of 20%, which will favor the town's property tax balance. Some of the meetings that happened, there was a neighborhood meeting on this back in August of 2024 at the Waxaw Elementary School. Planning Board did hear this on June 17th, did vote three to one to recommend denial of the conditional rezoning. Board of Commissioners first heard this on August 12th, 2025. The Board of Commissioners also heard it on August 26th, 2025. Staff found there to be some merits for the project, recommended additional conditions. It was continued at that time to this meeting. Just to recap what's going on with this project, the small portion of land right here, which is a part of one of the parcels, that is proposed to remain EC. The rest of this is proposed to be conditional zoning mixed use. And this portion over here, which is to the north, we're looking at this sideways, this was annexed in at the 26th hearing. Since then, the applicant has agreed to remove the gate between commercial and residential sections. They have also agreed to extend the parkway east an additional 300 feet. That would be the 1,200 feet total originally in the TIA. And they've agreed upon that with the TMA and with bonding and phasing of improvements. So again, that was previously 900. The applicant has also agreed to add a minimum of 7,500 square feet of commercial office space for residents to lease in one building, and a reduction of units, residential units, from 307 to 302. Presumably, that is the location of where those, where that office space was previously. Approximate commercial is 20.7 of the total development. Again, we did recalculate that using the building coverage ratio before we believe it to be around 13, so it has increased to just over the minimum 20% threshold that staff recommended as part of the CZMU zoning. The applicant is seeking a reduction of no more than 11% of required parking minimums. And I want to interject here. I did speak with Blair. Our calculations on this are still the same. We do believe, we counted the number of spaces that are shown on the plan, and we do believe that that is a total of 6.2% reduction. We didn't see any changes in that, so I think that's basically the same. If the applicant would like a higher percentage of that, I can let them address that with you, but we believe that's the same as it was before. It's a reduction of about 6%. The applicant agrees to construct the 180 feet plus or minus of Trail 24. That was shown on the plan, but there was, the wording on there previously was a little bit ambiguous, so we wanted to make sure that was included, that that would be done by the applicant. These were the three major items. The extension of the parkway east to the original boundary in the TIA. Over here, this would be removal of the gate. And then they are showing the office spaces on the first floor of this building right here. This is the primary changes that are showing up on the plan at this time. Here are the motion options again that we've included for you. You can feel free to use these as you want. If you'd like to tailor something different, whenever you do make your decision with a motion, please feel free. Right now, if this, if you were to approve as is, it would be using the current proposal with those three conditions met. If you wanted to approve with additional conditions, there are options on there as well, and then there's a denial option for you also. Any questions of staff?
Any questions or comments from the board?
So I still have the same concerns as far as the lack of commercial space that we so very much need. You know, we talked about the downtown master plan not too long ago, and the consultants there looked for 130,000 square feet of commercial to add to our very tight and historical downtown. And that further leads me to question, why would we rezone this employment center that's 120,000 square feet of commercial that's in our 2040 plan to give on that ratio? So, you know, we don't have a lot of land left in Waxaw for commercial space. And I really do think that we can get the parkway built with a better plan. I mean, the original plan, to me, was not a serious plan. It didn't meet our minimum requirements at all for any of what staff recommendations were, what our ordinance is called for, and it has taken now three months to get the bare minimum. So to me, that's a concern. We're giving up on parking, and in addition to that, I know that there was an argument made that commercial brings more traffic, right? But again, the whole story isn't told there because it's not, all commercial is not equal. So there are instances where some commercial does not bring in more traffic. Small-scale retail, which we need, professional services, which we need, and restaurants, which people want. They might need them, but they want them. And so this is supposed to be for economic development. A lot of times, as I've been sitting on the board and watching from home, I hear that people have to leave Waxaw to go to work. We have to leave Waxaw to go to work. Well, if we keep rezoning our economic zones for development, then people will always have to leave Waxaw to go to work, and it will add to traffic. We have kids here that don't drive, that need after-school jobs and summer jobs, and they have to go to Blakeney. Let's employ them in Waxaw. Let's take advantage of the sales tax that retail and commercial will bring. So we are at a very unhealthy ratio, 97-3. We are not only sick, I would say we're diseased, when the ratio should be 60-40. And that probably wouldn't be attainable at this point, but 80-20 would be good. I'd take 89-11 at this point, which is where we were when I sat on this board, and now we're backwards. So I know that we asked for a master plan for the whole parcels to see what was coming so that we can make an educated vote and really negotiate terms for this parkway up to Waxaw Indian Trail Road. We were not able to get that. And again, we asked for a considerable change in the commercial, and we're just not getting that.
I haven't heard a single logical reason to vote for this project. I've heard nonsense reasons, like the parkway. Sounds nice, parkway, right, but it's really misnamed. I mean, it's a 35 mile per hour road, and to say that we need to approve a development like this in order to get a few hundred feet of road, if we just think that through to the logical conclusion, imagine if every few hundred feet, we're putting in tons of apartments. What kind of a road are we going to end up with? It's crazy. And we have a planning board for a reason. Now, you know, the planning board isn't necessarily the gospel of what we should always do, but they do a technical review primarily. And you could conceive that a planning board might recommend approval of something, and then this board has the latitude to deny it. That's fine. That's how it is under the law. But if they complete, if these citizen volunteers complete a technical review and recommend denial, we should think very hard about approving it, because it's not even meeting the technical specifications. And if anyone on this board is planning to vote for this, the very least that you owe all the people in this room is a good reason.
Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for the Olivia project. The request is inconsistent with the stated goals of the 2040 comprehensive plan, and it is unreasonable and not in the public interest.
We have a motion for denial. Can I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Was that a yes? Sorry. I saw Jason's hand. I didn't see everybody else's hand. All opposed, correct.
I guess the motion carries.
The motion to deny is on the table. We have two in favor of denial. Commissioner Hall, you voted to deny, or you've voted to deny the denial? And then how do you vote, Commissioner Westlake? Deny the denial. Okay. So we have three denying the denial, and two in favor of the denial. Are there any other motions on the table? Alright.
I'll make a motion to adopt a conditional rezoning petition, CD 0062024, as presented with the amendments.
Motion on the table. All in favor? Do we need clarification? One second, please. Do we understand exactly what conditions we're approving at this point?
The fact that we don't know what they're approving?
So the request is reasonable and in the public interest in that it furthers the construction of the Waxaw East Parkway, Path 24 of the Waxaw pedestrian plan, and by including non-residential land uses for a more balanced tax base.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries three, two. Thank you very much. Next up, we have new business. Please. I know it's an upsetting result, folks, and I apologize for that, but do please contain yourself. We have an official meeting here. We'll give you a minute to clear out. We have an official meeting here, we'll give you a minute to clear out.
I am here to present the 2025 Waxaw Advisory Board Commissions, the Organization Advisory Board selection process for this year. So, the process of the OAB is to review the applicants for the advisory boards, recommend a slate of candidates to fill the vacant positions as terms expire each year. The process, the vetting process promotes a fair and efficient way to fill vacancies on boards and commissions, encouraging diverse qualified individuals and advising. The OAB helps the BOC make informed decisions based on merit and community needs, impartial recommendations, ensuring the selection process is fair and unbiased, which is crucial in fostering community trust. And then, let's see. So here's the timeline, on August 11th, the OAB had their initial meeting. They were giving all the applicants to conduct the interviews, and then through August 12th and September 12th, the OAB conducted those interviews for each member for their respective board or commission. September 15th, the OAB had their final meeting where they discussed the results of the ranking matrix and selected the recommended slate of candidates. Tonight, the BOC will adopt the slate of candidates or make individual motions to fill the vacancies. And then tomorrow, September 24th, the Clerk's Office will notify the applicants if they are appointed or not. So, for the vacancies, the HPC had three full-term seats, the PCR had three full-term seats, and one midterm seat. ABC had two full-term seats, and the Planning Board and the BOA had one full-term seat. So this is the 2025 slate of candidates that the OAB decided on for these positions. And now I just ask for a motion to either approve the 2025 slate of candidates or make those individual motions.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a comment. I mean, and I don't have a problem with the slate, I just had a little bit of concern about, I've heard that we only had one applicant available for a planning board, and normally the planning board is, we have multiple applicants for that, and I am a little concerned that people are not applying. So I, did we advertise this for very long?
I believe we did, posted on our website, and then we put out a couple of Facebook posts.
Okay. I mean, this is just a caution from doing this for eight years, this is very unusual. I don't know, and we are also now no longer having Waxaw 101, which was always a great opportunity to educate our citizens and get them to apply for the volunteer boards, and now that's not happening. And I think it's concerning, and, you know, the planning board itself is an advisory board, and we want people on there who have experience in development and planning, you know, we have an architect on there, I think we have someone in construction on there, things like that, that would be helpful, and we're not getting that, you know? And so I don't know if we want to either open it back up for more applications or just, you know, maybe make a better plan for moving forward, but that's the only comment I have, so.
Commissioner Westlake, our campaign runs May 1st, and we extended it to July 31st. That allows for the OAB to get together for their first meeting, look at all the applications, and then we have their initial meeting to go through and set those interviews up. That gives us roughly maybe two months to bring those names before you. I know it's disappointing that we didn't get any more applications for the planning board, but frankly, on all of the boards, we had very minimal applications. We barely were able to bring the slate to you as a whole based on the applications we had on file. I don't know what the answer is that, for that, other than maybe we, you know, change our campaign and start in April and go from April 1 to July 31st. But we do push that out on a periodic basis, both on social media and word of mouth. So, I understand the disappointment, but that is correct. We only had one viable candidate this year. One moved out of Waxaw, and the other one was just not able to be contacted.
And do we know, I mean, I just, I looked at the list, and I do know that one of the names that is being recommended for Parks and Rec has extensive experience in development. Did we, did we ask if he happened to be interested in? Were you, were you in that meeting? I don't, you meet with the OAB, right?
Yes.
Well, they didn't put in, they did not put in an application, so we can solicit those other applicants if they wish to apply for another board, but the planning board is a statutory board, and residency is required. And if that person is not a resident, then they wouldn't have been eligible to apply for the board anyway.
The person I had in mind actually, I believe, is a resident and went through Waxaw 101, but, and that's fine, I was just, I remember when, when we used to interview, the board used to interview, if we saw somebody had a skill that might be better for a different board that maybe they hadn't originally applied for, we would, you know, ask, would you be interested in this other board?
And the members of the OAB were instructed to pass those applications on if they felt that that person was interested, and if they wanted to apply for that board.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Is there any hesitation then on approving everybody as a slate, or do we want to go through these person by person? Slate's okay? You okay with the slate? Alrighty then. So could I get a motion to approve the 2025 slate of candidates?
Motion to approve the 2025 slate of candidates for the appointment and reapportments to serve on the Waxaw Advisory Boards and Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brandy. Alrighty, next up, we will jump to leadership reports. Mr. Scott Dodson, what do you got?
My report this evening is pretty short. We've been pretty busy with another issue around Town Hall, but I think the mayor articulated that issue well. I just wanted to reiterate something that the mayor said, and that is, thank you to all staff who really pulled their weight to assist and make sure services were up and going, and special hats off to Union County, their EM and IT, really appreciate them being there for us, as well as the state systems that showed up and were of assistance. If you went down and saw the War Room, as we call it, the, it was buzzing with about 20, 30 people at any given time, of people assisting and helping, and again, Mayor, I'd reiterate, hats off to the staff who really have done a fantastic job of keeping everything together and rebuilding a system. I've learned a lot about IT that I didn't want to know, so, just say that.
There you go. Next up, Ms. Ashley Noel.
Hi, guys, thank you. At the last board meeting, we discussed the downtown master plan, and the board directed the staff to come back with an additional public input strategy to get more input on the plan moving forward before it's adopted. So, Brandy put that strategy for you guys at your desks, and I just wanted to go through it here as well. So, we are going to add the new draft document to the downtown website and reopen that live survey, and that will launch this week. We have scheduled two in-person input sessions. One will be in the evening on Monday, October 6th, from 5 to 7. The morning one will be on Thursday, October 9th, from 8 to 10. Both of those we will host at the Duncan McDonald House.
And those are open-ended drop-in type sessions?
Absolutely.
It's not a two-hour affair?
Exactly. We will print some large versions of the master plan vision map, as well as the guiding principles documents, and each of the infill opportunity sites, so that we can get input on each of those. We will also print the implementation strategy list, which is the long list of tasks in short, mid, and long-term timeframes, and we'll make sure that those are able for people to take with them. We'll also have comment cards available at those input sessions. We are also planning on doing input at the Autumn Treasures Festival, so that's on Saturday, October 11th. We'll have a downtown tent that day just outside of the McDonald House, and we'll have all of our printed versions that we have at the input sessions also at the Autumn Treasures Festival. We also thought it was important to get some targeted downtown stakeholder input, so we will be producing some additional flyers similar to what we produced in March. We'll pass out to all of our businesses. We also have a comprehensive downtown communication strategy that includes monthly walks to our businesses, monthly downtown property owner meetings, committee meetings with some of our volunteers, weekly downtown business owner update emails, a text message program to our downtown business owners, and then also a downtown merchant webpage that's updated regularly. So we'll make sure the downtown master plan is prominently included in all of those messaging. We'll also be working with the comms team to make sure this is communicated out, not only on the downtown communications platforms, but our Town of Waxaw ones as well, so we'll have it on both websites and using all of our methods of communication that way. I also mentioned we'll have printed flyers, this was something we did back in March that was very successful. We had posters in all of our businesses and flyers that our businesses could hand out. So, we're trying to reach as many different communication strategies as we can, so happy to answer questions, or if you have other ideas, we would love to take them. Our goal is to bring the input, compile that, and bring it back to you at the October 14th meeting.
Quick question, Ashley. As far as the downtown businesses, is that a separate input session you'll be having with them, or is it just one of these two?
Yes.
And then are the building owners also invited to that?
Yes, okay.
I just wanted to say something, since I wasn't at the last meeting, which, by the way, I was traveling to the UK, taking my daughter for study abroad, so there was my reason, I was not here at the meeting. You know, as one of the board members that serves on the DWA, I think that it's important to point out the opportunities that business owners have had to give their own input. We have, is it the coffee once a week, once a month?
Yeah, we do have property owner coffee once a month.
Once a month. We have the happy hour once a quarter. I've attended both of those. Of course, we have the committee meetings during the week, the DWA board, which is open to the public once a month. There were multiple input sessions offered by the consultant for people to come to that, I mean, I attended a couple of those, and, you know, we can only do so much to give opportunity for input, and if people don't want to give that at that time, then that's more on them. I mean, we, Commissioner McMillan and I are both serving on the DWA and have never heard from the business owner that apparently spoke with Commissioner Wettler. So, I don't know why that is, but there's been a lot of opportunity for them to speak. I appreciate the extra input sessions you've provided, and so you think this will be ready for a vote on, we can do this on October 28th meeting?
I'll bring you guys the input on the 14th, and then you guys can decide how you'd like to proceed from there.
Commissioner Westlake, it was more than one business owner that didn't feel comfortable giving input in a session like that.
So they don't feel comfortable coming to our downtown?
No, they don't. I don't know why that is, and I don't know, when I go into businesses, why I get different information than maybe what is shared with you, but that's happening. That's not a made-up story.
Well, I would appreciate that any information, you know, that's being shared with you would be shared with the entire board, especially the two commissioners who serve on the DWA. I'm sharing it.
Anything else?
That's all, thank you, guys.
Thank you, it sounds like a really good plan. Will you be pushing out QR codes, I guess, as part of the survey?
Yes, correct, yep. Yeah, on our flyers and posters, yeah. We'll all have QR codes on them, yep. Thank you, guys.
Cool, thank you. Alrighty, next up, Dina Sabinski.
Good evening. At your spot, you have two lovely flyers. It tells you about all things coming up for community events and for Waxaw. So we've got this Friday, we have Jammin', it's a makeup from the summer, and we've had no rain for three weeks, and it's a possible of rain on Friday. So, make sure you check Facebook for weather announcements for Friday night. We have Tom Petty band-type person coming for Friday night at Community Corner. I'm doing a shout-out for PD, for National Night Out, is October the 7th, that's Tuesday. Hopefully we'll have cooler weather than this false fall that's happening right now with the summer. So that is on, at PD on the 7th. And then, of course, Autumn Treasures is coming up on the 11th. That's barbecue, that's vendors, that's food trucks, that is fun things in the park, all things community-minded happening that day in Waxaw, so you'll have lots of your friends downtown, so please come and join us. Please keep a lookout for the parking maps that are going to come out, and the shuttle maps, to help you have an easy way to get downtown and enjoy the festivities. We are still looking for Smile Trailer volunteers and general volunteers for the day for Autumn Treasures, and is that on that one? Program-wise, you'll have, you have the October in front of you, so lots of cool things happening at the Rec Barn and Downtown Park. I wanted to give a shout-out about the Learning Center. We are over halfway, done with the CIP project, we're looking to be completed by early spring. They are rocking it, everything is going great with the project, and we're super excited about it. So, like, the mill work is going in, and some of the appliances are going in, so it's really coming together, so really excited about that. And I wanted to give a wonderful shout-out to the park team. They've been doing a great job at Nesbit this past two weeks. You'll see lots of improvements on landscaping, redoing some of the railings, I mean, just a lot of TLC, so I wanted to give them a shout-out. And the Butterfly Garden at Town Creek, they did a whole refresh, and just, you know, making it look nice for everybody to go and play. Any questions?
Do you need adult volunteers for the Smile Trailer?
Yes. And that is, your contact for the Smile Trailer is Ms. Robin, and Hayden is our overall volunteer for the event. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll hope to see you on Friday night.
Thank you, Dina. Alrighty, comments from the commissioners? Very well. So now we will move into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A3. We were going into closed session to consult with an We were going into closed session to consult with an attorney employed to retain by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is privileged. So can I get a motion to go into public, to go into closed session? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.
Open session. All in favor? And I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are now adjourned. Thank you.